I'm going to call to order this work session for the Monroe County Board of Commissioners, August 18th, 2021. I'll note for the record that two commissioners are present. Commissioner Githens and Julie Thomas. We have one item on our agenda. Ms. Purdy or Ms. Rice?
Oh, I'm. I'm here because there, I do want to shout out to you about.
Oh, okay. So you have another item. Okay. Thank you. Ms. Purdy?
Yes. Hello there. I wasn't sure if Ms. Brown was going to be attending this session or not. So, yes, I am bringing forward to you the Architectural Services Agreement from Mr. Chamblee to do the Monroe County Highway Department relocation project that was agreed upon, I believe, last year that we would look to moving the highway from showers building out to the highway garage. And this is a not to exceed of $30,165. And if you will approve that today, I can always bring it back next week for the formal approval.
Excellent. Comments, questions? Commissioner Githens?
So this is just for moving part of the highway department. You know, when I first looked at that and I'm like, wait a minute, I thought that I thought that that we already had a garage. I didn't think we needed to build.
Yeah, no, no, no. This is moving staff from the showers building kind of where the administrative staff out to the highway garage. And I do believe that we will be retaining some of stormwater. And Lisa's not on here, but I know that there are some staff members who will stay because of their interaction with the other offices.
Right. Okay, this will lead to a lot of efficiencies. So can you talk about the process a little bit in terms of how we work through this item and the decision to move part of a department and what it takes to do that?
I'll try to. So what this agreement will do is allows for the architect to actually look at the facility space and determine the most appropriate and efficient use of that space in order to get our staff into the space. It's actually been vacated by emergency management. And what they will do is they'll provide us with design and construction drawings. And this is just the first part of it. So after this work is done, then we will be looking at getting actual construction or the movement of furniture. Sometimes it's the furniture stations, if you will, like what we put in the health department will be going into this area. So that will be the next phase. So there will be more money coming out of this whole project, but this is just the very beginning, I guess, to get it started. Does that answer the question?
Yes. Great. Thank you so much. So I'm going to go ahead and make a motion to approve the Architectural Services Contract for Monroe County Highway Department Relocation Project with Architect Michael Chamblee. This will be a GO bond fund number 4811, not to exceed $30,165.
Second.
And this will be heard for ratification on next week's agenda. Any comments or questions from the public on this item? Okay, seeing none, Mr. Cockrell, will you please call the roll for the Architectural Services Agreement for the Highway Department Relocation Project?
Commissioner Thomas?
Yes.
Commissioner Githens?
Yes.
Motion is approved two to zero.
Great. Thank you so much. Ms. Rice is here as well.
Yeah, good morning. I guess it's almost afternoon. Penny Cottle is on here too, and we just wanted to provide an update to you on some enforcement conversations we've been having with Seven Oaks Charter School. So as you know, that there's been some media attention and conversation about Seven Oaks Classical School and whether they are or are not complying with the local Board of Health order and regulation related to masks. Just to remind you and everybody else, the local order carved out a separate paragraph for schools and said that the schools shall follow CDC guidance, Department of Health and Department of Education guidelines. Penny and Penny, you can jump in there if you'd like to talk about the conversations you've had with Seven Oaks. And I'd like to share with the commissioners that I have been in touch with the Department, Indiana State Department of Health, General Counsel, the Department of Education, General Counsel, and and the attorney for the charter school, who is Heather Willie at Barnes and Thornburg. We've all, we all believe that the charter school has to comply with local health regulations. Part of their charter is that they have to comply with state, local, and federal law. And so we're working through what that's going to look like. I think to give benefit of the doubt to the charter school, there may be confusion about interpretation of the governor's order or interpretation of what does it mean to follow CDC guidelines. And so what I'd like to ask you guys today is, you know, Penny and I have have developed a plan forward. If that plan forward, if we're not able to ensure that everybody's on the same page and and compliance is is taking place. A new law passed in Indiana says that a local Board of Health or a local health officer may not file an action under subsection A, and subsection A says that a local Board of Health or a health officer may enforce the board's or the officer's order citations and administrative notices by an action in the circuit court. So if we are, if we need to file an action under subsection A in the circuit court to enforce an order citation or administrative notice, we must, we can't do that unless the appropriate legislative body has authorized the local Board of Health or local health officer to file an action. So what I'm asking today is whether you support the Board of Health filing an action in circuit court if we need to do so. I'm not saying today that we are going to file an action. We hope that we can avoid that, and we hope that we're going to get voluntary compliance. But if we do need to file an action, and I would like to know what your opinion is on that, and if you support the local board enforcing their orders in circuit court. Now, let me say that before you answer. We never immediately run to court to seek an injunction and force an action. Generally, courts want you to try to exhaust all your administrative efforts before you come and appeal to them. You know, running to court first, you know, right out of the gate is generally not the way that most reasonable lawyers proceed. Given, however, that this is a health issue, we want to be able to have that option to file an injunction if we need to. So Penny, do you want to say anything before we hear from the commissioners?
You really talked about it well, as always. We have conversations with the school. In terms of reporting cases, we believe that, you know, they're compliant in terms of that. I think that their view, as I understand it, is that they don't believe that they fall under that mask portion of the regulation. And so as Margie noted, we are trying to work through all of that and get questions answered so that we can get the compliance without having to take further action.
Great. Thank you.
Yeah, one of the things that Mr. Thomas said earlier today that was is worthy of highlighting is that to remember that it is the virus that we are all up against. We are not up against other humans. And I'd like to remind everybody that the members of Seven Oaks Classical School are valued members of our community. Their parents, their board, their students, they're all valuable members of our community. Reasonable people can disagree about the law. They can disagree about interpretation. And that does not make them our enemy. And we are seeking a positive path forward, proceeding clarity, we're seeking help. And citations have not been issued yet, but I would expect us to issue citations before we file an action in circuit court. Again, just trying to get attention and resolve the situation. We are hesitant to take taxpayer money from a school corporation and put it into the hands of Monroe County if we don't have to. And so we're always, again, Penny and I and her staff, we try to bend over backwards to resolve a situation short of formal legal action. So happy to answer any questions you might have.
The only, the last thing that I would note, and then I'll shut up, is just that this is all about keeping our students safe. We have students in the school. We have, I'm sure, faculty and staff who are unable to be vaccinated. And we, you, all you have to do is turn on the news to, whether you're looking at Indiana or another state to see the difficulty and the challenges in schools. So we want to keep children in school, but we want that environment to be as safe as possible.
Right. Thank you. So does this have to be a formal motion? Do we know?
No, you know, Dave Shilling and I, and I don't know if Davis is on here at this work session or not. But Dave and I had a nice conversation yesterday about how he approaches these similar actions with planned commission. And he doesn't bring, you know, a formal motion, doesn't bring a formal complaint to you for approval. He just has a conversation with you to get what you, get what you're thinking and to make sure that there is something in the minutes of a public meeting that show that you have authorized the filing of an action if necessary.
Yeah, I think that's a great analogy. First, we'll turn to, well, let's see, Mr. Cockrell, did you want to add anything?
No, I think Margie covered it. Other than that, you know, I think before they actually could, I do think there should need to be some kind of formal vote, don't you, Margie?
Yeah, I mean, I think that's, and the reason I'm here is, you know, today is so that I wouldn't have to wait until next Wednesday if something turns around and we need to file it before next Wednesday. I will point out too, that state law, newly enacted state law, new this year, Incident Enrolled Act V, if anybody's interested in that legislation, it amended the code to also say if, you know, a citation is issued that somebody could appeal that to the Board of Commissioners or to our local legislative body. I believe, and Jeff, you may want to speak to this, that you guys previously developed procedures for an appeal process. So if any tickets or citations were issued under chapter 305 for failure to comply with the health regulation, somebody receiving that ticket would have seven days to appeal it to the Board of Commissioners. Now, you, you don't have to hear, you can, you can deny an appeal simply by not not hearing the appeal. But you also can can schedule it for an appeal hearing if you wanted to. And I don't know if Jeff wants to talk about that. But again, keep in mind, citations have not yet been issued, but I expect if we can't gain voluntary complaints very near future, that's going to be a reality.
Thank you. Commissioner Githens, we are surrounded by attorneys, so.
May I make a, I think, just for the record, Margie informed me yesterday, and she can confirm this, that the health department has had conversations with school officials, and they have acknowledged that some are wearing masks and some are not. So this isn't just a purely hypothetical situation that is being presented to you.
Right. Thank you. Thank you. That's, that's.
Yeah. And on that same note, Penny and I had just talked about, you know, sending a staff member and one of our enforcement officers out to the school to again verify that in fact, some, some students are wearing masks and some are not. It may be that we get out there and, you know, people are masked and it all looks great. And so it's important to to get eyes on it. And I think Penny, Penny's making steps to do that.
Okay, so let's go. Mr. Cockrell, did you have anything you wanted to?
Oh, I was just gonna remind the commissioners that they did improve, that they did pass that policy right after the legislation came up. So we do have that in place, and it follows the statutory requirements.
Ms. Ms. Cottle, did you have anything you wanted to add? I keep going back to the same people, but you all have some really interesting insights and new information. So I want to make sure we don't miss anything. Commissioner Githens, did you want to go ahead and chime in?
Yeah. Yeah. So first of all, I want to thank Margie and Penny Cottle for contacting all these other people, including the lawyer for Seven Oaks. But the Grace College is the chartering authority for Seven Oaks, and I wonder if maybe they should be contacted as well.
Yeah. And just to clarify, the lawyer that I contacted is the lawyer for Grace College. So Seven Oaks, to my knowledge, I am not aware that they have an attorney representing them. They have an attorney on their board.
Right.
He's a member of their board, Terry English, and I have talked with him. And his response in in as to an enforcement was do what you need to do. When I reached out to to Tim Zbar with Grace College, and he, and I asked, do you have an attorney that I can talk to? His answer was no comment. But I then did hear from an attorney out of Indianapolis, the firm Barnes and Thornburg, who represents Grace College. I have been in communication with her. We've talked through the issues. Interestingly enough, she's very well versed on health regulations because she represents, her firm represents the Marion County Health Department. So, you know, and you know, she's the one who told me that she thinks there's some confusion about the way the governor's order is written and that people may be interpreting it differently. Essentially, in one place, people think it says schools get to do what they want to do. And then in another place, it says that schools are responsible for implementing local health regulations. And so there may be some confusion. Again, to give people the benefit of the doubt, there may be confusion about the way the Monroe County Health Order was written. We tried to make it clear. If we did not, we will certainly make that clear at our meeting on August 23rd. That is a public meeting. I encourage everybody to attend that Board of Health meeting and give their input. One of the things that I shared with the school board member from from Seven Oaks is they, they on their platform teach democracy. I can't think of no better way to teach democracy to a group of kids than to show them how local regulations are made in practice. Show up to the Board of Health meeting, give input. Go to the Board of Commissioners meeting, give input, see how, see how a local regulation is put in place, see how due process works. This is democracy in action. I think it's a divine opportunity that's been dumped in their lap to sort of teach their, their students and their parents about how how the laws work. I don't think, as a lawyer, I don't think you get to pick and choose which laws you want to follow just because you like one or you don't like another one. And so I believe that they have to follow the laws as implemented. And we are dotting our i's and crossing our t's to make sure that we're following all the new laws. One of the questions that Heather Willie, who's the attorney for Barnes and Thornburg, asked me was if we took our order to the Board of Commissioners. And I assured her that we did, and I assured her that both at the Board of Health meeting and the Commissioners meeting, there was robust public comment, not required by law, but certainly invited in Monroe County, and that we in fact changed our order and it made it better because of the public comment. And I would encourage anybody who has, I'm being absolutely sincere, anybody who has input into what they think the next Board of Health order should look like, by all means, show up, participate, give us your input, do that at the Commissioners meeting as well, and we'll end up with a much better work product as a result.
Thank you. So I, I am also, I believe I heard Commissioner Githens right, so correct me if I'm wrong, that you're supporting this action if needed. I also do so because so much effort has gone into educating, working with, collaborating with, learning from the folks at the school. And I know they want to do the right thing for the kids and their families. So, yeah, I absolutely support an enforcement action if it's necessary. And I know that you will do everything you can to avoid that.
What, and with what Ms. Rice said about democracy, if we could do the same thing about virology and and science in terms of, you see this as a teaching platform.
Yeah, this is what happens in a pandemic. Yeah. All right. Excellent. So do you have enough information for what you need?
I think I do. I want to, I definitely want to check with Mr. Shilling and Mr. Cockrell to make sure that they think that there's, everything's been covered and there's nothing that's been omitted. I think that we are in good shape. Again, we will avoid, no, Dave Shilling, we will avoid court if we can and try to resolve it on our own. That's worst case scenario is that we'll have to file an action. I hope we don't. Dave?
Just, just have the commissioners weigh in on that. I think, I think everything's been covered.
Yeah.
Now, do you think it needs to be formally voted on, or do you think the both of them's?
Yes, I think it needs to be formally voted on. And again, the commissioners can always ratify things later by statute. So if if they need to come back next week, we can do.
Yeah. And there's case law in Indiana that says, you know, boards and commissions, you know, speak through their minutes. And so this, this meeting is certainly recorded, we'll have minutes of it, and that we will be able to show a part of the record if necessary that you were well informed and that you may made an affirmative decision to to support the filing of an action if necessary. And so if you will, if we can, call a vote on that. And since we're on Zoom, have a roll call vote, that would be ideal.
Okay. I, I want to know first if we need to make a motion that's specific to this particular entity?
I think that would be why. So, yes, the motion would be you let me read this to you. Pursuant to Indiana Code 162126B, the Monroe County Board of Commissioners authorized the local Board of Health or local health officer to file an action in circuit court to enforce the health boards or officers' orders, citations, and administrative notices if necessary.
So moved.
Thank you. A little second. I was gonna say, I cannot read fast enough. I got part of it down. All right. So we have a motion in a second. Because this is a voting item, let's go ahead and take public comment on this. If anyone has. Okay, I don't see any hands raised. So, Mr. Cockrell, will you please call the roll on this item?
Commissioner Thomas?
Yes.
Commissioner Githens?
Yes.
Motion is approved two to zero.
Yeah, we will definitely keep you updated.
Yes, please do. That would be great. All right, good. Let's see if there's any other departments heads who have an item for us. Mr. Shilling?
No, nothing to report at this time.
Thank you. Clerk Brown, did you want to speak today?
I do. I do. My presentation started out, good morning, commissioners, but it is now afternoon. Commissioners, thank you for the opportunity to appear at last week's work session. And thank you for the opportunity to appear before you today regarding our ongoing discussion of the space needs at Election Central. In summary, I'm sure you'll recall my asking you to acknowledge that piecemeal space allocations dedicated to Monroe County elections serve neither the best interests of Monroe County nor its registered voters. That the pandemic only magnified the space constraints with which we already grapple at Election Central. That while we were incredibly grateful to the board for the use of various locations within Monroe County government for the purposes of processing ballots during the primary and general elections, our gratitude did not negate the need to expand the existing accommodations within the Johnson Hardware Building. Unlike many Monroe County government employees who were in a position to take advantage of the opportunity to work from home last year, a number of the clerk and election employees could not. Measures were taken to keep all workers in compliance with the capacity directive set by the Governor Holcomb's executive order. And this included, but not being limited to, it being necessary for some of my employees to work out of the back of a rented U-Haul truck that was parked in front of Election Central during early voting in an effort to limit the number of people inside Election Central at any one time and make more room for our valued absentee workers and voters. I advise that while I do not have a crystal ball, I felt confident in saying that going forward, no personnel assisting with elections will feel completely comfortable or confident in performing their duties while being compressed into smaller accommodations and within close proximity of their bipartisan counterparts. I express my hope to be the last Monroe County clerk in my lifetime to have to appear before the Board of Commissioners requesting expansion efforts and voter registration. I highlighted the national coverage regarding the integrity of election results being challenged, which is a paramount concern to me, given that it is my office that supplies the election results for Monroe County. I mentioned the Herculean task when it comes to redistricting and or annexation efforts that are forthcoming as well as ever changing law, legislation, and procedural updates. And finally, at last week's work session, I noted that Architecture 101 calls for everything to be contained under Run Roof and that my request for expansion at the Johnson Hardware Building go to the very heart of election security in Monroe County. The board even received comment from one of my election board members with respect to the importance of election security in conjunction with the integrity of elections. I ascribe to the life lessons taught by Maya Angelou, who noted, she was noted for regularly counseling that when people show you who they are, you need to believe them the first time. I came to you last week in good faith, and I have returned this week in good faith, presenting the board with an opportunity to meet the moment when it comes to elections in Monroe County. I have never been afraid to be the person who says the emperor is not wearing any clothes. Voter turnout, not only in Monroe County, but throughout the United States, is not trending downward and space requirements will not decrease. If we do not address this issue and rise up to meet this moment, being mindful that we don't have the luxury of time as we are already preparing for 2022 elections, this problem is only going to avalanche. With my request for the full and total expansion of Election Central, I am setting the table not just for myself, but for future clerks in Monroe County, knowing that I am standing on the right side of history when it comes to doing the right thing for Monroe County voters. And I am asking for you to do the same. I also stand confident in the knowledge that I have both bipartisan and nonpartisan support for the expansion requests before you. As you requested, I have identified the amount of square footage and designated them temporary versus permanent space needs. And as you might imagine, because we don't turn the lights out and shut the doors following an election, the work goes on and the space utilized during early voting and on election day is repurposed for other related duties. In other words, the space requests are permanent. You should have already received scanned copies of my answers to your requests, and I'll humbly ask your forgiveness for my handwritten notes. With that, I welcome the opportunity to take your questions. I'm happy to go over what I scan to you, and I want to note my intent to either return or have someone return in my stead to your weekly meetings so that we can continue to address these issues until there is some resolution. Thank you.
Thank you, Clerk Brown. We have not received any documentation. Ms. Purdy, have we received any documentation?
No.
I think I have.
Okay. Well, you need. Okay. Well, you need to, if you could forward that to us, that would be great. And if we have questions.
I scanned them to each commissioner directly this morning before I came up to participate on the call.
Okay. And thanks Nicole for doing that. I had asked that you send it to the groups, but I sent you the email regarding the formal item. But just so everybody understands and for the public, you know, the commissioners have asked for specific needs regarding the voter registration and the elections and what is needed on a temporary basis and a permanent basis. And they have not, although you say that you got that to them this morning, and I had it sent to me from Anita, and so it's handwritten. And you are looking at the community corrections space specifically. And I think that it's appropriate to state that the commissioners are in complete agreement in that elections are extremely important. The problem we have is moving staff is a leapfrog type of event. Commissioner Thomas asked me earlier about the highway process, getting them moved from showers into the garage. And I was just thinking about where we're at this point in time. I think what everybody needs to understand is that project started in 2018. And it required the renovation and addition of space out at the highway garage, at the highway facility where we added our emergency operations center. So then we had to move, so we did, we had to do that. Then we had to take the emergency operations staff and move them into the new building. And now we're able to take as they can. So now we're able to renovate that space and then move our highway space, our highway people into the new space. So it's always a leapfrog kind of approach. And there's always a really bad year. I can tell you that, for instance, we just finished the health department and that one actually started in 2017. And, you know, they spent a year in vacated space in the showers building because we had to have a place to put them while their space is being renovated. So it's, it's, it's a difficult process. And I just want to make sure everybody understands that it's not as simple as here you go.
Ms. Purdy, I certainly am grateful for your clarification. I guess the concern that I have with that is that I started bringing these issues up in 2016 because we discovered that we had significant space, space constraints following our working the presidential elections in 2016.
I don't know. And I appreciate that, Clerk Brown, but I know that the commissioners have responded on multiple occasions. And, and I know that this last election, they had approved changes to that physical space. And that was done, and at the time, which was pre-COVID, everyone said, said it was wonderful. And they thought it met, they said it met the needs of, of voter registration. Well, then we had, then we got hit by the pandemic. And so that has changed things. But I do think for the record, it's appropriate to state that the commissioners have responded every time there has been a request. And the last request, again, prior to the pandemic, which has made us all kind of figure out a different way of living together. You know, the answer was, this is, this will work for us. This is great. But now we're here. And so I just kind of want to leave it like that.
Yeah. I, yeah, I think that's a good place to leave it. I, I don't want to rehash the past. I don't think there's any purpose in it. I would rather we focus on what's needed. I have not received any documentation. I just looked at my email. I don't have anything. So please send it to whoever has it, forward it to us. Because we did ask very specifically, I know Commissioner Jones was at the election board meeting, we asked specifically for a written request. So we knew what was needed for storage, what was needed for voter registration, what was needed to process ballots, what was needed for space to actually run the election. And I think it's important that, I don't know. You know, so we had folks here today. I don't know what they know about how we've addressed this in the past. I don't want anybody out there to think that any of us are opposed to elections on being free and fair and accessible to as many people as possible. But it's also important to note that the election board plays a role in determining the spaces where elections are held, whether an additional early voting space is available, et cetera. But the election board in 2020 was operating under the same problems that we were operating under, which was the pandemic. We all made accommodations. So I just want everyone in the public to know that. That, you know, part of this is a commissioner decision, the building, but part of it is also an election board decision, how many sites will you have open for early voting? And so both of those, both of those need to be addressed. And in terms of election accessibility. Mr. Cockrell, did you have anything you wanted to add?
Just, and maybe it's already been covered. But I guess my thought is with this proposal and with the, the, the needs that have been expressed for an additional space for Election Central, it requires moving something, right? Community corrections or Election Central, if that space can accommodate both, I think that a legitimate question that always pops in my mind is is this the appropriate spot for Alexa, Election Central? What makes it the appropriate spot? Because I think there are reasons that the community corrections needs to be close to the courts. I'm not saying that, I'm not, I'm not going to argue against more space for, for the Election Central, but I think if we're looking for a permanent solution, that those kind of issues should be discussed with the Board of Commissioners and the Election Board. I mean, I think if this is a permanent solution, let's look at all the options that are out there. Because if we need to make an accommodation, somebody's got to move and want to make sure that we move the, the person who will get the most benefit out of that.
And Attorney Cockrell, I certainly appreciate everything that you're saying at this time. I would point that, point out that my predecessor was not given the benefit of those discussions and consultations prior to be moving, being moved out of the Curry Building. And now our Monroe County voters are accustomed to voting at Election Central. I still have, unfortunately, no matter how much advertising we do, I still have voters who truly believe that the last time they voted early was at the Curry Building. And it has not been that way for an extended period of time, a number of election cycles. I feel we, it would lend to the appearance of voter suppression if the point that is being made is that somebody's got to go. And it's the Monroe County voters that are designated to somebody that has to go.
I just need to, I just saw this. So I just need to clarify something on your handwritten notes. I, I'm on page one of two. And I just want to clarify what I'm reading to make sure that it, it, it matches your intentions, Clerk Brown, if you would. I have the following: permanent 2,500 square feet for voting equipment, storage, e-poll book, et cetera, alarm, security. Obviously, that would have to be climate controlled. Permanent 2,500 square feet for classroom training rooms. Voter registration training during off-election times throughout the year. And then I have 1,500 square feet of storage space for voted ballots post-election. And then I have at the bottom of page one on the right-hand side, and ballot paper storage. Is that ballot paper storage part of this 1,500 square feet?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. So, so far I have 6,500 square feet. And then I go to page two. Let me get there. And what, how, how many square feet is this? Is this is, it looks like it appears to be voter, I don't see voter registration on here, but it appears to be, oh yeah, here it is. Oh no. Wait, workspace, ballot room, election and voter registration employees, is that year round? And, right?
I'm sorry, which, which one?
I'm on page two, and I'm trying to understand.
One is the top floor, one is the bottom floor.
Okay.
Are you doing it at the top floor or the bottom floor?
Yeah, I see what you did. But instead of doing that, because we're, we're looking at space needs, not a, and it may be this building and it may not, but what, so that includes, does this include processing for elections? It says temporary, permanent on the left side of the page, processing area. That's for election time. That's the temporary part, correct?
Yes.
And then the absentee, early and absentee voting, that's temporary because that's just during elections. Oh, early voting phone lines. So that's temporary, permanent. And then in the center of the page at the top, ballot room, expanded area. And then on the right side of the page, I'm assuming that that this includes voter registration, or does it not include voter registration that you currently have there?
It includes voter registration. The, the area where my voter registration clerks are right now, and you've been in there. So I know that you know, when you first go in that door and you look to the right, that's a more confined space. And so I'm saying that in the off, when there is not an election and we have to do voter list maintenance and all those registrations come out, that we need expanded space to process that. Two desks are not going to allow us to spread out and oversee that voter list maintenance. Or any project like the redistricting or the annexation or reprecincting, that they, that we need rooms for the maps and the
Right. Got it. Yeah. And those can come up at any time, obviously. It's not just at election time. So.
That, that's my point.
Yeah.
It happens all year round.
Get it. So you are requesting a total of 13,000 square feet. Of the 13,000 square feet, what part of that is, would you consider temporary versus permanent?
The part that is temporary is when we utilize that space for early and absentee voting. That obviously does, elections aren't 365 days a year. And you can see how we convert our workspace into, from when you're just visiting there at a normal time versus elections, that we reconfigure that space. Had we had more space, I would have had more egresses and we would have been able to pull, put more voters through. Right now, we have one egress. That's the door in the back. You can't go out the door. You came in when, when you vote. And so I, the, the entirety of the building allows for no fewer than four doors that we can have voters directed to once they are done voting to go out so that we don't have the kinds of lines that we had previously.
So, so the egress problem would have to be addressed architecturally in the current space?
There's four doors there now.
Okay. So, so then back to my question about absentee early voting, how many square feet of the 13,000 total you're requesting would be for absentee early voting?
Right now, if I'm not mistaken, we have about 3,000 square feet. And so I'm wanting to expand that out. So whatever 6,500 minus 3,000 would be so that we have that voters going from the front to the back.
So, so 3,000 square feet is for?
That's exactly what we have now.
Okay, how, okay, but that's not my question. My question is, how many square feet are you requesting for absentee early voting? Not look, don't look at this building just out of, if your request is 13,000 square feet, how much of that is temporary?
I'm going to say double that, 6,000 square feet.
So 6,000 square feet for temporary needs, early voting, whatever it might be. Okay. Okay. So that's 6,000 square feet. And then I'll, I'll open this up to Commissioner Giffens because I have another question, but I'm trying to frame it.
Well, part of mine has, has been discussed already, you know. First of all, I agree, elections are extremely important, doing them right, making sure that it's, it's accessible is right. But accessibility is part of my issue here because this is not an ADA compliant building right now to be going from the first floor to the second floor. And that would take some major, major renovation in there. And we want to know that, not for me, not just the total space, but how it would be divided. Because there might be, as, as Jeff Cockrell said, there might be a better place to be doing this. I understand that, that voters like consistency. They, they want to go vote the same place they've always voted. We get that every time that there's a precinct change or a polling place change. We, we get that. But I don't think that that should be the thing that, that determines the decision-making here. So.
I would respectfully disagree with that.
Okay. Did you have anything else, Commissioner Giffens? So, so has the election board reviewed this document and, and said, yep, that's what we need? Okay. Then my other question is, storage is in two pieces, right? There's the piece that is climate controlled, secured, alarmed, right, the e-poll books, et cetera. The other piece is spent ballots that you have to, to save up paper for future ballots, those kinds of things that are not necessarily climate controlled, but storage needs to be effectuated. What is the square footage for each of those things? It looks like 2,500 square feet for the electronic side?
Yes, let me, let me clarify. So currently, my voting equipment is at a storage unit in Ellisville.
Right.
During the recent flooding, flooding rains that we had, but for the presence of mind of my election supervisor, we didn't know that the voting, that my storage unit had not been flooded. If that equipment were on the second floor of the Johnson Hardware Building, I would not be worried after flooding rains in Monroe County that my election equipment had been damaged. And right now, that equipment is stacked, one on top of the other, which doesn't allow for my vendors to get in, maneuver, do the preventative maintenance that needs to be done, do the testing and things that need to be done of the equipment. And so that square footage would allow us to have plenty of room for storage, plus room for them to navigate, you know, without being shoulder to shoulder. The, for the ballots, we do need some reasonable insurance of a dry climate because that paper does age, it does yellow. And we, we end up having hundreds of boxes of voted ballots. I know it doesn't seem like that when it's one at a time, people in line waiting to vote. But I believe we brought you pictures before of how many boxes we house until we can send them away to be shredded. We hold on to, we have to hold on to voted ballots for 22 months. I hang on to them in Monroe County long enough to ensure that we don't have a recount or some other reason to challenge the election. And so just about the time that we get those ballots off to where they can be destroyed, it's time for another election. It's time for new ballots. And then those have to be boxed up and, and held. And so it's, it's kind of a musical chairs thing right now for which we need more space to accommodate.
Okay, so how, how many square feet of space do you need for paper storage, whether it be blank paper or?
1,500 square feet.
1,500 square feet?
Yes, ma'am.
But some of those things, does that include stacking them on shelves?
Stacking the boxes, stacks and storage shelves, yes, ma'am.
Okay. On shelving units, okay. I'm just trying to get the whole scope of this. We, you know, we, we needed this detailed information to even start our discussion internally about space needs. And there are, there are a lot of things we have to look at whenever we do this. But as, as Commissioner Githens said, of course, we want accessible elections. We want the space to be appropriate. We want to do the right thing for all the residents of Monroe County. And again, there are two pieces to this. One is a facility and the other is where people can really vote. And that second part is, is outside of our purview, but it is in the election board's purview, as you know. So I just want to clarify that for anybody who's watching, that we can do something about facility, but we can't solve everything that people have raised with us about elections. And we know everybody's working really hard and has worked really hard. And the pandemic year was a time when I really liked the way everybody came together and just focused on the goal. And I think we need to do that here. And just look forward and, and figure out how we can do this. Anybody is welcome to come to any of our work sessions. But this is something where I don't, I don't think we're going to have an answer in a week. In fact, I can tell you, we're not going to have an answer in a week because we have got to work through a few things. But if, if anybody wants to come back, you know, next week and we can, you know, hear the same numbers, that's fine. But I, but, but the important thing is, is if there are any changes or any updates to this information. So for example, you come back and go, well, no, we really need 2,000 square feet, whatever it might be. If anything changes, please send us an email right away. And that way we can incorporate it immediately, instead of waiting a week. We can incorporate it immediately into our discussions and into our space needs process that we're working through. Does that make sense?
It makes sense and I appreciate what you are saying. I just want to be perfectly transparent for Monroe County, for the voters, that I'm not just looking at current space needs. Our space needs are going to continue to grow. If the commissioner's perspective is, you'll take the space we give you and you'll love it, then those are the parameters that I have to work within. What I am saying for the benefit of not lending to the appearance of voter suppression is that we were moved to this space under the previous clerk's administration. We have made the best of this space and now voters are accustomed to voting here. I don't believe that it would be prudent to have them, to explore the possibility of moving where they know and are comfortable voting.
Yep, and I hear that, and I hear that concern and I appreciate that concern. It's just that we have limited real estate, real estate downtown. And we have to make sure all the pieces work together and that they work together well for everybody. And obviously, the voters are on that list of everybody. So, but I appreciate you expressing that, that idea. And there are pros and cons to different locations and, you know, moving versus staying. And we have to weigh through all of that and, and, and determine the best path forward. And we do this all the time, as you heard with the earlier item. We, we move offices all, as much as we would not want to do that. We always say, we'll just put somebody there and leave them there. This happens all the time. And so it's something that we are used to and that we can work through. And we will do so as expeditiously as we can. And I want to see if my colleague has anything else to add. Yeah, Commissioner Githens, your question or comment?
I was just going to say, this is so light on the print that came through. I was going to ask if Clerk Brown could please rescan it and try to make it heavier with what, what we're seeing. And like even the bottom of the first page of mine is partly cut off. And so, I mean, what's showing up on those? Yeah, it's just hard for me. I, so if it could be rescanned, I would really appreciate it.
Yeah, now that, now that you're seeing that Commissioner Githens is in the middle of that bottom of the first page, I can't confirming, no, and I don't know. Yeah, what goes after? So yeah, or, or, you know, don't, instead of having to use the building that you're in, just use square footage and just type us a list and send it on email, that'd be even better. You know, what's permanent, what's temporary, what's it for, square footage wise? I know you're using the building with 13,000 square feet, what if it was 12,000, what would you do? I mean, I, I think, I think we just need to, to understand what the square footage needs are without using the building so that we are getting in an accurate picture as possible, if that makes sense. Doesn't mean it won't be there, it just means that, you know, we need to, we need to get a grasp on that. Did you have anything else, Commissioner Githens?
Yeah, I, I, I don't think we're going to move back to the Curry Building if that's any.
No, no. No, I don't think that's going to happen either.
No, I, but I, I do need time to digest all of this and to add up these numbers.
Yeah, we got a lot, we got a lot to, to work through here. So, and that's why I asked so many questions and I appreciate Clerk Brown's patience with my questions because I wanted to make sure I understood exactly what, what is being asked. So, and we will send you further questions, I would assume. We'll just send it to you and the election board as a whole and just say, hey, is this the question that we have? Or we'll come to your meeting or whatever. So we'll, we'll definitely, I think there will be questions that we're going to have. So I would, I would anticipate that just because we're still digesting it and Commissioner Jones is in here, so. Okay, are we good?
That's fine.
We have a path forward and I'm excited to tackle this, this issue. It's sort of one of the many logistical things that we have to tackle along the way. And it's a very important one, as we all know, and nobody's denying that. So we will move forward as quickly as we can. Any other department heads have an update or information for us today? Okay, if not, then we will go ahead and adjourn this meeting. Our next regular meeting is on August 25th. So at 10:00 AM on Zoom. All right, with that, unless Commissioner Githens has anything else, we are adjourned. Thanks, everyone, appreciate you.